Moving on to announcements, there will be a public hearing tomorrow, July 16th, at 6:30 to consider the reauthorization and five-year plan of the Westchester Business Improvement District Authority. Are there any common suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to reports and presentations, starting with the Borough Managers' Report.
Good evening, Sean Metrick, Borough Manager. Welcome, welcome to July, welcome to the back half of 2025. And it is the season where we start thinking about the budget, so I wanted to prepare you all for the budget process that is coming up and also for the comments that you're going to hear tomorrow night from our audit team from Maily. And what you'll hear tomorrow night is a recitation of a lot of facts and figures and numbers, and I'm going to try and provide some context and meaning and some trends over the last few years for those numbers that you'll see tomorrow night. But a little bit about our process, schedule-wise, I included that in our report. One thing I want to draw your attention to is that in September, at the committee meetings, the department heads will be coming to you and talking to you about some of their operational and capital goals for next year and how those affect staffing. Basically, those project narratives that are in the budget describing what is going to be happening in the departments next year, and it's your opportunity to ask some questions of them about the budget coming up. September is far too early for us to have any real definite numbers to go into the budget, but nevertheless, the admin code requires that I give a prelim budget presentation by a certain deadline, and that's going to happen in the September business meeting. And we really get into the details in October. We really start to figure out and hammer out and figure out the final details of the budget in October. I'd really like us to have a great idea of where we're going to land at the time when you adopt a preliminary budget and you have to schedule your public hearing in November. In November, council has the opportunity to adopt the budget or continue the hearing to December, so 30 days to talk things over if you'd like to. I have three concerns about the budget next year, three objectives I want to bring to your attention that I'll talk more about in September and October. Customer service, first of all. I think we've made some improvements. This is the first time in my four and a half years here that we've been able to provide consistent, in-person, business hour, phone answering, and persons at the window at all hours that we are open for business. Couldn't have done that without your support, without bringing on some new staff in building and housing, so I very much appreciate that. And a lot of credit goes to the finance team. We have a finance person now who can handle accounts receivable, and she's at the front of our building, answering phone calls and helping walk in customers. And we've always had really good customer service in the parking department. I look to Ramsey and thank her for that effort there. Our parking service team isn't always appreciated by the public, but we do give very good service when people do come in and they want to discuss, most oftentimes, problems they had with a ticket. Parks and Recreation is another big thing. Very soon, in the next 30 days, a recreation open space plan will come before you for your consideration for adoption. And included in there is going to be a call for greater maintenance of our parks and open spaces. And I think to do that, we need more expertise, training, we need to configure our hiring standards, we might need to, the next time we go out and recruit people in Public Works, talk about bringing in skill sets into the department that can handle that maintenance, and also to contract with third parties for skills that we don't have in-house. But I think what you'll see in the Recreation Open Space Plan is a call for greater maintenance of all of our parks, not just our marquee parks that are well-known as looking their best all the time, but all of our parks. All the parks in our system should be maintained to a very high level and very high standard, and that goes for this borough building, too. I want to, in my time here, elevate the quality of our public spaces. And there's opportunity downtown to create more informal public spaces in our streets with well-designed street furniture planters, those kinds of things, to make our downtown more inviting. So all of those things I want to see implemented in my time here. And lastly, training. We have some pretty good training budget dollars in some departments. The Police Department, for instance, has a really great program of upskilling employees, training people up, learning new skill sets. You always have somebody who can move into positions like detective or the community policing unit, and that comes from a real culture of developing people's skill sets. And there's a gap in our budget on the administration side to be able to do that. So I'm coming up with some programs together with Ramsey that are going to, we're going to start targeting next year, and we're going to ask for a little more money for training next year for our administrative departments. And also, I've asked, I will be asking, haven't yet, I think Don's in the audience, we're going to be looking the same thing with Public Works, to make sure that safety comes first and that people are trained up. That's the appetizer portion of tonight's Borough Manager's Report. We're going to move on to the entree, which is the financial statements. And so what I've grabbed are profit and loss statements, Bill, and those are those three line charts I mentioned, if you could show them. Thank you. This tracks profit and loss. This is budget, this is revenue minus expenditures. Doesn't account for receivables and payables at the end of the year, accrued accounting. This is just what came in and what went out. And you can see a pretty big change here in the general fund. We've had four straight years of positive experience in the general fund. That comes from the work of the finance team, making sure that details are attended to and that people are approving correct invoices. It comes from the support we've gotten from you all. There have been tax increases, of real estate tax increases in my time here, not every year, but they have happened, and that's been able, we've been able to grow our revenue to meet our demand and stay ahead of rising costs, because we do have some baked-in costs that are going to rise year-over-year with contracted raises, lease expenses, Public Works, and those kinds of things. Two-thirds of your employees have programmed raises baked in. We have a high level of service that we want to meet, and I think there's a demand for that in this community. I hear it from you all, the elected officials, and I like to think we're doing a good job of meeting that demand. But we've also been able to do that and build up the general fund reserves over the last four years with your cooperation. Parking Fund has shown a similar, positive experience over the last few years, but not as many negative years in the recent past as the general funded. And we've also turned around the wastewater fund in the last four years. I say all that to say, we're at a moment where we've established practices and we have a track record now that says we are managing our finances responsibly, gives you a little more flexibility going into budget season if you want to consider using cash reserves to pay for operations going into next year, gives you options and choices to go into next year. We're no longer worrying about how are we going to meet payroll in January. It was never that bad, but we would go out and get a tax increment, not tax increment, help me out here. Swing loan to get through the first, I can't remember the word, six to eight weeks of the year. We don't do that anymore, and in fact, if you look at the bar chart, Bill, on the bottom of page four called General Fund Balance over the last eight years, the 2024 audit ended with a general fund balance of $5.1 million, and that includes those accrued expenditures and accrued revenues that I mentioned that weren't in the profit and loss statements. That's money we expect to pay for things that we already used or money we're expecting to get in that we are owed. And that's what makes the audit a really important document, because you can, not that we're doing this, but any business can hide their true financial position if you're not looking at what is actually owed to people when you end the year. You could be sitting on checks, you could be sitting on deposits to make your books look different, but that's why you have an audit financial statement that's on an accrual basis. The point I want to make is that we are at $5.1 million general fund balance position at the end of 2024, and that's the first time we've been over two months of expenditures in our general fund balance at year-end. And that's the minimum kind of bar of financial health. Think about that in your household. If you're spending $10,000 a month, do you have $20,000 in the bank? You probably should if you're running those kind of expenditures, because you don't know what's going to happen or what's going to come up. We all manage our own finances. But that's the same thing with the borough, and part of the jump I want to highlight between '21 and '22 is because council wrote off expenditures between money that was owed from the general fund to the wastewater and parking. We're going to be coming back to you to reduce a little more of those inter-fund balances because we no longer use the debt service fund, and there's some money owed between stream protection and debt service that has to be taken off the books so that we can have a real clear picture of our financial position going forward. And I think Barb mentioned a little bit about that, Brian, in finance, in her monthly report. So I'm really proud of the fact that we no longer borrow money to meet our operating expenses in the first couple of months of the year, and that's, I give Barb and her team a lot of credit for that. And lastly, the Capital Operating Reserve has kind of been the piggyback of the borough for many years. This was initially funded through the sale of the water system many, many years ago, I believe, 1999. Kind of about right. The borough sold its water system to Aqua Pennsylvania. Now, the water system's privately owned, and proceeds from that sale went into this fund to backstop operating and capital expenditures under the thinking that interest generated from these dollars would, could backfill expenses. I'm happy to say that since 2020, that the Capital Operating Reserve is growing, partly because we're not dipping into it. We're doing a better job of watching inter-fund transfers. I can't say that was true before. And also, the interest rate environment has improved. If I could have my way, I would love for interest rates to stay where they're at, because it incents people who save money instead of people who borrow money. I think that's just a good position for local government to be in, not necessarily if you're in the business of borrowing lots of money, spending a lot of money, and running a very leveraged balance sheet. We don't do that here. We have, we like to invest money and make money off of sound, dependable investments like money market accounts, and we're doing pretty well with that in the last year and a half or so. So that concludes this report for this month. If there's any questions about what's coming up, happy to answer. We're going to be talking a lot more about money in the coming months, operations, and wishes and plans for next year.
Council, any questions, comments?
Just a comment, because the, going back to the chart, where we see the general fund balance, the trend line, or the bar is going up year-over-year. Is it going to continue that way? I mean, you helped answer my question by how much is too much in there? And it sounds to me like the rule of thumb is kind of like household savings, where you should have an emergency fund of three months, and it sounds like right now we're basically, we're able to cover two months. I think that's how I heard you say that.
We're between two and three, yeah.
Between two and three. So that's kind of a healthy rule of thumb for municipalities?
That's a minimum bar.
Minimum bar.
And in my 10 years of being a borough manager, this has been a constant problem everywhere I've been, and I'm happy to say we're above the bar here for the first time in my 10 years of being a borough manager.
And that money is currently invested in money markets, higher-yielding money markets than we've done before, correct?
The money that we, that can sit for a while, the slow money, so to speak, yes, but not all of that money. Because we have, because the general fund's very, very transactional, very liquid. Think about it, we have a $22 million general fund budget, so we're moving $1.8, $2 million a month, so we need to, we need to go to the checking, and checking accounts don't typically, especially commercial checking accounts don't do well. I would love to, because I think we get killed on bank fees. I would love to talk more about that.
Yes.
Nice work, thank you to you and your team.
Yeah, a lot of credit to Barb and her team, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, because Mr. Flynn and I, I think, have been up here the longest, and I know where we were in 2020 and the work that Mr. Allen and others put into it, and Barb, it really shows. I mean, we have really, it's night and day from where we were in 2020 and even prior to 2020, actually. So, you know, acknowledging that work and seeing where we are today, hats off to the team that made that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business, motion to approve the June 17th and 18th Borough Council Meeting Minutes. Any comments, changes? Can you move that to consent, please? Moving on to new business, motion to reappoint Steve Krug to the Westchester Area Council of Governments, UCC Board of Appeals. Any questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? Okay, we'll move that to consent, please. Next, interview for boards and commissions. We have the Planning Commission and Transportation Advisory Committee, and I think we have several candidates for the Planning Commission. I'm hoping that, in case you don't get appointed to the Planning Commission, you might consider the Transportation Advisory Committee. So, we'll start with Quentin Burrow.
Good evening, everyone. How's it going? Pretty good?
First of all, I assume you're Jason's son?
Yes, I am.
Tell us a little bit about your background, you're a recent grad, but it sounds like you've had some intern experience.
So, I am a recent graduate of Temple University this past May, where I obtained my community development degree, Bachelor of Science, and it was awesome. I learned so much in planning and community development and community engagement in all these different fields. And I really developed interests mainly in, I want to say, community planning, some more local planning, especially after interning for the Cheshire County Planning Commission last summer. And also, just community planning, honestly, parks and recreation, housing, especially forward housing, that's a learning a lot at the Planning Commission last summer, and parks and recreation. So, yeah, this is where I'm at. I'm currently on the job hunt right now, and I think this opportunity could be great for just my, just for experience and everything else. And I am a local to Westchester, so I lived here my entire life. In the past four years, I've lived in Philly, but I had an apartment, so I was back and forth. And, yeah, I love the strong, just a strong sense of community here, from just the local events to just, to the borough's history. It's very important to me, and, yes.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
I got a question. So, you mentioned affordable housing. So what did you learn and what are you thinking? What ideas would you have for the borough of Westchester with affordable housing?
So, first off, I do think it's a very important topic, considering that they are implementing some, some developers are implementing affordable housing soon in Westchester, but I think it's important because it just gives people a comfortable and affordable place to live, and I think it's one of the main priorities I focus on right now. And I think some ideas could be just covering more spaces in Westchester, so people who don't have the opportunity to live right now, this is too expensive, because it is a very expensive place to live right now, I do think it would open that gap up and allow people to live here more comfortably, so.
Mr. Burrow?
Mr. Burrow, Planning Commission and Transportation Advisory Board, do you have a preference and why?
Yes, I have a preference for the Planning Commission. Yeah, so I'm definitely more interested in the broader topic of planning compared to transportation. Transportation wasn't really one of my interests when I was studying community development at Temple, and I think, I think just being on the Planning Commission, especially after my dad served there, would just be a great experience for me, especially because I'm a young person, and I think I've, after being at Temple for four years, I had the fresh information out of my mind that could be good, that could be put to good use at the Planning Commission, so.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem.
Quentin?
Yes.
You could have chose anywhere, but you chose Temple. I still remember the commercials, that 1956, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
I got a granddaughter starting there in September, nursing.
Oh, that's awesome.
And she, today, just joined the Pennsylvania National Guard as well.
Oh, great.
So, we're pretty proud of her, so, and she's going to be cherry and white, so, never thought I'd say that.
Go Owls.
Yeah, John Chaney hated me, I was a basketball referee. But anyway, a couple of questions for you. How long can you hold your breath underwater? It's pretty obvious you're a pretty efficient swimmer. I'll try to loosen you up a little bit, relax.
Yeah, yeah, so I've swam for the past, I want to say, 16 years of my life, year-round, and I've taught school lessons at Westchester University the past few years, and now, this summer, I'm starting camp counseling at the YMCA, and I've been there for about the past two weeks, and it's been awesome. I love working with kids. That's another aspect of why I want to work and be involved in the community. I love going to all the local events at Westchester, and I just love being there, it's just great. So, yeah.
Two more questions for you. The, can you read blueprints and are you efficient at all with the CAD of using the computer to read blueprints? Did they teach you any of that at Temple?
I, not necessarily blueprints, but I, like, yeah, not really. I would say I have, like, some, I have some experience in, like, Adobe Illustrator and some experience in AutoCAD, but not much in just, like, reading blueprints, yeah.
All right. And lastly, congratulations for making the decision.
Thank you so much.
Father got his money's worth. I should say, your mother got her money's worth, but thank you very much, Quentin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. McCoy, I just have a few questions. First of all, I'm a TCU grad, so go out.
Yeah, go Owls.
Go TCU. And you mentioned that you are on the hunt for full-time employment.
Yes.
I assume that that's local?
Yes, completely local. Anywhere, I would say, in just around this area, Chester County, Delaware County, mainly in PA, I don't really want to leave the state, but I am open to it. I just love staying in Chester County, because I just love this area. I grew up here, and I just lived my entire life here, so it's just, I want to stay here and I want to see positive growth in this community.
And for my education, is CAD something that is still used for planning and blueprints, or is there another software or technology that's out there? I know it changes very quickly.
We do use GIS, which is a pretty known one, I feel like, and I did have some experience in that. I took a class in GIS, and it was pretty fun, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else?
Question, you know, the Planning Commission, as you know, your father put in a lot of time and effort with it, and it's not, it's one of the, I think, hardest commissions to be a part of, and I'm concerned that your skill set might not be there. So I guess my question to you would be, how would you get up to snuff so that you can jump in with, in the water?
Yes.
With both feet, so you can be up to date?
Well, yes, my skill set is not there, but I do think being with various professionals in planning, being around these people, and just working on projects with these people would not only just boost my, just make me more used to being around planners, but also, like, just, I feel like I would be more involved, and I think I would learn over the course of the time being there. I would think, I'm a pretty fast learner, so I think I would learn and then just execute, and I think I would, I think I would, although I think it would take a couple, some time to get used to things, I think I would be an efficient part of that team, so.
So, my question isn't about you being around planners, my question is about how will you bring your, get up to snuff so that the very first meeting, you know what they're talking about? You know what all the terminology and all of it means? So that's my question. What would you do to prepare if asked to be a part of this commission?
Yes, I would do lots of research, and I would go over the recent reports, the recent meetings and agendas, the planning commission has had. I would talk to my father about this, and I would learn, just try to get the speed about everything and where the planning commission is at. But, yeah, I think I would mainly just go back and reread and understand the NPC and just, yeah, so, do research, is my answer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now that Temple got all of their things in here, let's get to Brendan from my alma mater and my, and even my engineering program, civil and architectural engineer.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. So, background about me, Brandon Emig. Originally, I'm from northern Chester County, I went to ONGA, but married a girl here that grew up in Westchester, and we've lived here ever since. As you stated, came from Drexel University, architectural with a civil focus, structural focus background. I've worked now in the heavy civil environment now as a, with a contractor for the past eight years. So I'd say, from my skill set, I cater more towards the tech team, but at the same time, the Planning Commission could be right up my alley, too. Either way, you know, whatever, you know, you guys feel is the best fit. I have plenty of ideas, I know, I follow some of the meetings online, I check in with even some developers in the area, because I have a lot of contacts, Eli Khan being one of them, because I did a project with him not too long ago up at Ship Road there for West Whiteland Township, but past that, if you have any direct questions on my kind of experience or what maybe my ideas might be for what the Planning Commission or tech could have, I've got kind of a running list in front of me, so.
Great, you can either share those or entertain some questions.
I just want to focus you a little bit on explaining what your thoughts are for tech and what you think Westchester, very broadly, could use, because for me, it's a really important commission, and I think it needs to be directed in a really specific and thoughtful way, so I want to find people who are up to the challenge.
I feel like tech, it seems like the concept is to directly, or will connect the community not just of Westchester, but to the greater surrounding area through either the rail system or the trail system predominantly. So one idea that comes to mind is how do we best connect to Chester County Trail, whether it be through the 322 corridor or the 100 corridor up to Excent Station. Either way is kind of sufficient, as well as maybe then future connections. I know there's a lot of cycling aspects down between here and Longwood, along the Pecopsin area. I have kind of ideas of what development we could do down at that quadrant near Everhard Park. It's currently privately owned, but there, I think there's some options down there. And other aspects, I know that you guys are trying to get into the future planning And other aspects, I know that you guys are trying to get into the future planning when it comes to EV. I think the new street parking lot is a critical location for EV, as well as potential bike stalls there if you're going to introduce cycling up that 322 corridor. I think it's just so happens that the cycling club calls that same intersection home, which is kind of ironic, so I think that'd be a perfect spot for it, but. Yeah, in general, it's, it's kind of a, the, the, the Transportation Advisory Committee is mostly dedicated to trying to really connect the surrounding community with West Chester and trying to be, I think, forward-thinking on how we can improve access to that community. So the hardest one for me is the rail system. Obviously SEPT is having a lot of issues. I work with SEPT on a lot of projects. One being Chestnut Hill East that's currently shut down. I'm one of the managers for that. So I know that they have a lot of funding concerns. I don't see, I've talked with them about the interest surrounding West Chester's rail. They don't necessarily seem to want to jump on board with it. I think there's better avenues potentially through leasing some of that line commercially, like being East Neils, that industrial park that's presented. Maybe that Adams Street Rail Yard could be utilized for that distribution center that's planned and the tenant that eventually takes, takes on that lease, maybe that could be an option. But yeah, that's kind of where I'm at with that, so.
I mean, just going on the TAC thing. If you were to imagine, if you were to imagine getting around just mobility in and out of West Chester or surrounding West Chester, or even to the airport, or to Philly.
Yeah.
In the absence of SEPTA.
The absence of SEPTA.
What, yeah, what, what, what kind of considerations would you have if there was a world without SEPTA? And maybe Amtrak could fill in some of the, the potential gaps if, if some of those rail lines do shut down or they can't operate them effectively.
I mean, there, I don't really, there isn't equivalent to SEPTA, right now at least in our area.
What about micro transit?
Go ahead.
Micro transit.
Regular transit?
Micro.
Micro transit. By that you mean individual transit via your personal vehicle?
But for buses.
Oh, I haven't really thought too much on that. I don't know that that's necessarily the way to go, being that our corridor is already inundated, isn't of itself. The Blue Route, et cetera, there's already.
Keller was doing it pretty effectively.
You think so, okay, but yeah, I haven't put a lot of thought into micro transit specifically, so. Good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I got a question. Besides what you hear people are saying that they, we need, what do you think West Chester needs in order to create connectivity?
Accessibility. I think our ADA is lacking in our area. I know they're doing improvements along the High Corridor now. I bid that project myself. We were the second bidder, I think, for the contractor that I worked for. So didn't get that one, but a lot of just connectivity of the park system as our borough manager, I think, mentioned, improving our parks' ADA accessibility. One, I live near Marshall Square. There's not, to my opinion, that the cross paths aren't really accessible for ADA use. I'd also say connecting from a park to the other park, be it, you know, pathways that you could introduce, kind of like what I think of that comes to mind is the Freedom Trail in Boston, having some kind of trail path that's designated in the sidewalk that people can follow along. And you could kind of have some sort of storyline by post, having postings of kind of the borough's history along that trail. So just sort of getting more involvement in the history of the borough through the connection of our park system is, with the improvement of our ADA, is what I kind of lean to, is what this borough can need.
So if, given the opportunity to be on planning or transportation, what's your first choice?
Um, I'm not, either or really, honest, I, whatever is needed more for the borough at this moment in time, I can do either, so. It's whatever's requested. I live in the first district here, as well as Pat, so, yeah, either or.
The, I'm very familiar with Rocon, the, I love Ted McKenna's boat.
He sold that though.
Oh, I know he did, shucks, but it was a wonderful vacation we used to have. But anyway, the, do you believe that sound barriers along the interstates and along the roads actually cut down the sound in the neighborhoods? Because 202 now start, you're, I live on the far side of the borough here. We, now we're starting to be able to hear the rumblings of 202 all the way to the other side of borough. I was just curious whether you thought the sound barriers would actually help with PennDOT?
Are, I mean, they're, they're effective, there's, there's clearly, you know, reports that show the effectiveness of them. Are they completely 100% there? No. I actually had a project, it wasn't in Chester County, but up in Montgomery County, that had a unique problem with a specific homeowner that they didn't feel the sound barrier that we built them was adequate. We had to do improvements on their property past what the sound barrier provided on PennDOT's dime. Whether it be additional tree plantings we did, improving even windows within their house was what PennDOT provided. So there's, there's other avenues, but I mean, it's, the sound barrier is only going to be able to do so much. That specific location had six lanes on an interstate on 309. So as taller you build them, the more effective they are, but then there's a limit to how tall you really can go, so.
Any other questions or comments? Brendan, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Go Dragons.
Thanks, guys.
Nobody's ever. Okay, next we have Janine Brahmagana Hauder. Did I totally screw that up?
Hauder.
Thank you.
Hi. Give you a little background. I've been in construction for 30 years. Everything from low-rise residential to right now I'm in life sciences as a construction estimator. I think I could bring value to a team with the knowledge that I have in construction. When I initially thought about doing this, I just kind of thought, I, I am a borough resident and I thought to myself, like, I, I have a lot of knowledge that I can bring to the table. I don't know if that's a fit, what you're looking for as far as what my background is. But if I'm on a team of people, I, I can read blueprints. Blue Beam is the preferred right now in construction, that and PlanSwift. I can also present values, dollar values to construction. With the low rises that we're going to be seeing here developing, I'm very familiar with that kind of construction, as well as institutional, commercial, I've done it all. Right now, currently, again, I am in life sciences, which is more like biotech pharma, so. Any questions?
With your knowledge, again, knowing that we've got all these projects in different states right now, like, what, what, just I'm trying to get a flavor of like, what, what would you, if you had this brought to you in front of you, like a project, what would you look for? What would you consider? What feedback would you want to provide?
I guess for me, like when I'm looking, like when I look at a project for owners or for like Mike, the company that I'm in now, your location is number one. Like, how is that facility or whatever is being built in the area? How's that going to affect the neighboring areas, the neighbors and whether it be a noise, HVAC unit on a roof? Or like with these, with these projects that are being, that could be built over by Everheart and so forth? Like what, how that sound barrier is, you know, just with the neighboring residents and how that's going to affect them? I am very aware of that, just in what I do in construction, like what you would have to do, screen walls on the roof, stuff like that. I, foot traffic, like what that brings when you, when you do build up these, this small area in the borough. Like, how's that going to affect the foot traffic and the parking and so forth? And what, and what I do, we always look at everything. I do construction soup to nuts. I do from civil to, I estimate from civil to mechanical to electrical to infrastructure. So it's, again, I've been doing this a very long time. I think as a, being in a team, I may, you know, bring some value to that regarding costs and just what I've been doing for the past 30 years.
What would you say is the biggest deficit in planning in the borough? And what would be your recommendation to fix?
Instead of going the biggest deficit, I think one of the biggest improvements I've seen living here is that we're getting these roadways cleaned up and taken care of. One of the deficits is the trash and how that's handled in, in the borough. Like, there's so many, and with this, with blocking off the streets, what we're doing now, there's so many really innovative ideas that could happen with the, the open air market as far as bollards coming up from below. Like, you know, there's so many gateways that can be collapsible and, and removable versus, I see, I live here. I see that we have to bring in a, the, the crew comes in and they're putting those, those bollards down. There's just so much, there's a better, efficient way of doing that, I believe. I believe more aesthetically, there's a better way to do that as well. So I think what we're, what we're doing here in the borough right now with the open air market, it's obviously bringing in a lot of revenue. It's bringing a lot of attention to our little town. I would say a deficit would be the trash and how we are presenting what we're trying to accomplish with doing the open air market. I think if we do it in such a way, again, something, something as simple as the bollards and how we, we have that infrastructure set up, so it just looks better. It's just, you know, it just brings more attention. I'm all for bringing more people into the borough. I know a lot of people are not in some regards, but I think it's great what we're doing with our open air market and, and bringing a, a, a pretty big spotlight on our, our little borough here.
So I have two questions. One, you know, when you're, if you were to be on the Planning Commission, your objective is to protect the borough, not the construction companies, not the, all of the different companies that are trying to build in this borough.
Oh, for sure.
And so that's my first concern, since you're on the construction side so much. So Mike, let me ask my question. So my question is, how would you protect the borough in a case where they want to build a huge mammoth apartment complex right across the street on Market Street? Where it's part of, it's a floodplain and it's never been built on because of the floodplain. And we already have problems with the other apartments built on Market Street because of, we're getting more of 50-year rains and 100-year rains and it seems like we're getting a lot more of them, you know? Look at July and June, it's rained almost every day. So how would you protect the borough in that case? You know, in generalities, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot. And then secondly, how would you look at affordable housing in the borough?
So how I would protect, so I'm fortunate in that, in what I do, I'm more on the engineering side. So what I do now in the past five years of my career, I'm basically develop estimates for engineers that then goes to contractors. So I'm not technically tied to contractors. So I do look out for what's best in, in any scenario. So I would, and I also have resources at my hands. I, I'm currently, my resume states that I work with Genesis Engineering. On Monday, I started with a company, it's a global company called Arcatus. Arcatus is a global company that has multiple wings of construction. And I will have at my fingertips anything from transportation to life sciences. My focus is life sciences, but I interact daily with architects, engineers, mechanical, electrical, I mean, you know, I am very in tune with that. So I can kind of foresee if there is a low rise going in and with that floodplain, I do have people that I can reach out to, civil engineers and so forth, and say, hey, can you look at this plan? And we can look at it together and, I mean, just because I, again, I've been in the industry for so long that I have a lot of connections. So I think I bring a value in that regard. Affordable living, I, again, living in the borough, I understand there is a huge need for that and to protect it here in the borough. So with that being said, I think there needs to almost be an outreach, like where we're making sure that they are, that we are keeping our, our fingers on that and we're not just looking at what, bringing the revenue in, but also taking care of the people that need it as well. I don't know if that answered your question, but.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, I know that there was another candidate. Good, how are you?
Good. I'm Dr. Thomas Jagus. I've lived outside of the borough, but in West Chester for all 41 years of my life. I am a local Eagle Scout, a 2003 graduate of Henderson High School. My fiance, Elise, and I just purchased our home at 204 South Walnut about three months ago. This home was greatly neglected. Elise and I plan to restore it and live here for a very long time because we love this town. Elise is a graduate of West Chester University and currently working as an occupational therapist at Bryn Mawr Rehab. I received my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering at Penn State University. I worked for a major engineering company in Philadelphia for a little over three years. And then I went to chiropractic college in New York and I worked locally for the top chiropractor in the state and along with the union soccer team. After that, I started my own practice. And then I also followed my passion for construction, which I've always had. Over the last six years, I've worked for local builders. The latest one was Kamarowski Construction for the past three years. And as their project manager and lead carpenter, my last project was Jolene's Restaurant in the Borough. It was awarded the Preservation Alliance Award for the Greater Philadelphia Area just this year. Recently, I left Kamarowski Construction to start my own residential construction company. And so why am I here? As a kid, I grew up sitting in on Thornbury Township meetings when my father was on their Planning Commission for the first 15 years of my life. And then for the last 25-plus years, he's been on the zoning and hearing board for Thornbury Township Delaware County. So I've experienced a lot of board meetings and issues that come up at those meetings. So I'm here today seeking the Planning Commission seat to continue what this board has so successfully done. You've preserved the character and atmosphere of this town established in the 1700s. You maintained its colonial atmosphere, welcomed the local arts, music, retail and food. And you've kept a healthy balance with the university. Also in 2001, awarded by livability.com as one of the top 100 places to live in America. So I look forward to the opportunity to join this board and keep West Chester the beautiful town that it is and that my fiance and I love so much. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
What would be, sorry.
No, you're fine.
What would be the first thing that you would want to see to get us back on that two thousand and one list? What pops into your head first?
I don't know what you've done wrong since then. Uh, it seems like, again, growing up here all my life, seeing the improvements throughout my entire lifetime, it doesn't seem like much has changed since then. Um, I really like how you've designated sometime in the summer to Gay Street closing down for the public. Um, and on High Street where you've narrowed the street somewhat for more public accessibility, getting rid of, uh, parking and adding sidewalk space for pedestrians. Um, in traveling, uh, throughout the country and, and abroad, you see that in a lot of different countries where they make the pedestrians a priority. Um, and so it's nice to see that on a high street in the past few years. Um, otherwise, yeah, I can't really think of anything else that you've done wrong since then.
Well, not that we've done wrong.
Yeah.
What, what opportunities are there?
What do you need, um?
There's, the good definitely outweighs the, the bad a lot.
I think, um, I, I, it'd be great to see some sort, like to have some accessibility to the rail line that used to be here. Um, otherwise, again, the, what you've done for the arts and the community and music has been, been great. Yeah.
Can I ask you, you're talking about the planning commission, but some of your, like, comments make me think that you would be good on the transportation committee.
Yeah.
Would you be offended if you were on either one?
Um, I, again, in seeing what my father did, I kind of liked the opportunity in intending to be here for my lifetime to take steps through the planning commission to maybe get to a zoning position eventually, zoning hearing position. Um, that was just in response to the question on transportation, but I would like to be part of the greater decisions on keeping the borough what it is, uh, which involves all aspects of it.
Hearing you talk about liking the bump outs on High Street, it honestly makes me want to go on the transportation committee because that, you know, that, stuff like that is so impactful for how we live here.
Yeah.
And you appreciate that.
Yeah, I do.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna.
No, no, that's fine. I, I appreciate all the things you guys are doing. And, um, along with the transportation, having experience in civil engineering and working in residential construction, I have a lot of opinions on that too. Yeah.
Other questions?
I have a question. So first question, is your house like currently gutted?
Yes.
Okay, we've walked past it, we were like looking at it, we're like, what's going on? And, and I asked, we, I was like, oh, I wonder if, um, this is someone that's gonna flip it or someone who's gonna own it?
Yeah.
And that's very nice, it's someone that's gonna own it.
It's a dream of ours, uh, to, we've wanted to buy here forever. We both grew up, uh, in the area and, um, got lucky recently. And, um, yeah, I've taken seven tons of plaster out of it so far.
Yeah, yeah.
So take it apart and then put it back together.
What you turn it into.
Yeah.
But so with that comes a question though. What, um, you know, right now, Westchester is what, sixty-six to seventy percent rental? How do, how would you advise our zoning, our saldo, or all of those things in order to encourage more people buying and updating and living as opposed to buying and updating and renting to somebody else? Like how, how, what, what can we do there to get more couples like you and your fiance into the borough, updating homes and living here?
Um, it's tough as those owners who are making that rent money to convince them, but, um, I've seen over the years where you've had student housing that has shifted from multiple apartments to then a single unit and then kind of switches over to something that someone would have to buy because it's no longer two apartments. Um, that's a tough one though, because these people have owned these homes for a long time and want that rent money. But, um, I think in the last five years or so, there's been somewhat of a migration from the cities to areas such as ours where homeowners are looking to buy. If we could control the real estate market and make them more affordable for younger couples, it would probably work out. But, um, you see somewhat middle-aged, older people purchasing these homes. Um, but I don't know what incentive there would be to get them to be owners and not rent, not renting because it's too good for the, those that are doing the renting. But like I said, for us, we, we wanna restore the home and live here. Uh, don't have a great answer for that one.
Thanks for trying.
Yeah.
Thomas?
Yes.
How long can you hold your, no, I'm just teasing.
No, I am a swimmer.
I was just gonna see if you really were paying attention.
Three minutes or so, yeah.
My first question. We, we got a scuba diver in the back of the temple, you know what I'm saying? Uh, I'm looking at your skillset and, um, I'm, I'm from the trades. Uh, and I'm looking at the, the various things that you, that you could actually touch on, which fit pretty nicely right with the planning commission, everything that they do, you know? But the question I do have from you, I have two questions. Uh, how did you, did you secure your master carpenter certificate? It says here you're a master carpenter.
That's like a self-proclaimed thing. It's just, uh, the capabilities of what I can do. I don't think there is an actual master carpenter certificate. It's what you're willing to do and take on, such as if you've ever been to Jolene's Restaurant, the finish is in there. Um, but I don't think there is a certificate to proclaim that professionally, yes.
Team, you got one honest guy in the room that, that spoke up, very good. The, the, the other one is, can you tell me a little bit about the Indian Reservation that you worked on?
Yeah.
In Montana.
Thanks for reminding me, that was on the resume, I forgot about that. But that was with, uh, Penn State University. Um, we, in the, I worked with the architectural engineering department and, um, with that department, we, um, had a project on the Northern Cheyenne Reservation where we built a solar home. It was somewhat practice. Um, the professor had worked there for ten, fifteen years prior to me being there, but, um, the Solar Decathlon, which is held on the Mall in Washington DC, it's a global competition. We got third place, um, the year I was a part of it. But prior to going there, um, we went to the Northern Cheyenne Reservation, built a straw bale solar home for the, they have a university there. Um, and that was for any, um, professor that came to work at the Cheyenne and Indian Reservation. Um, and so lived there in tents for a month and built this home, solar powered. And, um, and then we continued that model for the Solar Decathlon, uh, in DC. Yes.
I got it, I got one more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from your experience and knowledge, what, what piece of the puzzle do you believe that you could bring to the table within the planning commission?
Um, again, the civil engineering experience. Um, and seeing this town for all of my life and how it's been preserved and improved, just to look out for those who are trying to maybe just financially gain and not, don't care about the character of the town. Um, but to be able to read blueprints and engineering documents and keep an eye out for anything that might be suspicious in regards to deviating from that goal of shooting for the livability or whoever wants to award best places in America to live and, and to just keep moving forward what you guys have done.
So I have a follow-up question to that. So you're, as a civil engineer, you're familiar with codes, ordinances?
Yes.
Uh, so obviously the whole planning commission, everything's based on our ordinances.
Yes.
The fact that you can read blueprints and
Yes.
understand ordinances, be familiar with the reading, even though you wouldn't necessarily know hours inside and out is, is important.
Mm-hmm. Um, I work for Bowler Engineering in Philadelphia and we would work in many, many different townships. So we had a whole library for everyone else's codes and always had to visit those for different projects. So would bring myself up to speed a hundred percent with the burrows. Um, and then doing a little bit of residential work myself here. And for the past six years, it's proficient. But yes, would make it a priority to, to know everything, being on the board.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yes.
So, um, I guess we'll consider these and perhaps discuss tomorrow evening. Everyone good with that? Okay, thank you. All right, next we'll move on to item C, administration, communication and technology.
Caught me off guard there after that long conversation. Um, yes, uh, act committee had one item, uh, that we actually had a motion for. This is a standard item that comes up and it's basically, um, to dispose of records or purge them as they come, uh, as their time comes. Um, and so the motion here is to, um, is to dispose of the following records, the open records files prior to twenty twenty-two, solicitors' applications prior to twenty twenty-one, the building and housing residential building permits prior to twenty twenty, rental permits receipts prior to twenty seventeen. And these are all in according to, as it says here, Pennsylvania records retention and disposal schedule. So, uh, recommendation three zero from the committee.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Public comment, questions? Okay, looks like we can move that to consent, please. Moving on to the parking committee.
We had a motion to approve the special event parking fees policy for town center special events. This, in the discussion, um, we focused on the idea of what a special event is to a visitor or someone parking in town center and not sort of the official special event that needs an application. So things like, um, Restaurant Festival is not a special event that needs an application because that's something put on by our borough. But the experience of what a special event is, is what we were discussing in the parking committee and what the, um, attachment is about. And then, um, Patrick requested a breakdown for some of the major special events and the parking revenue, um, which has been handed around to all of us and, um, is interesting to look at and makes me want to move more events to Saturdays, but, um, that's a different issue. And did, did anyone have questions or did Ramji want to go over anything with the policy itself?
So in parking committee, I don't think we actually reviewed this yet. I did send it out after the finance committee. Um, but this is based on the recommendations of the parking committee that, and I did find a definition to define a special event and then just this discusses specifically special events that take place within the town center district. Uh, the recommendation was to engage a twenty dollar fee per car. Um, it'll begin at eight AM the day of the event and end at the time the event ends. This does not include the open air market, which is not considered a standard special event and is exempt from this requirement because that is, um, it's every weekend and it, it's not part of the special event procedure. Uh, it also notes that vendors that participate in the special event will be given one parking pass per vendor for free parking in either the garage or the lot. Monthly account holders at the garages will be permitted to park during their regular hours with no additional fee, but will be required to pay the event fee if they park outside their allotted garage hours. And, uh, one point that I'm, I think is very relevant is that revenue from all special event parking will not be shared and will be retained wholly by, uh, to the borough of Westchester Parking Services Department and then shared however Barb shares that. Um, and then there was a discussion about events taking place on Sunday. We will allow for church parking in the neighboring lots and we can try to come up with a borough generated parking pass, but after a specified time, then they, everybody in that lot would be required to pay the event fee. And we would post during, we would post signage designating the times and notify the churches at least two weeks prior to the event. And then it just goes through the procedure internally of how that would be managed. That's all I got.
So, uh, what is the fee that the committee is recommending here?
Twenty dollars.
Okay. And the special events are the ones that are listed here or?
So this, in the document, it, it sort of describes any sort of event, but this is specifically located in town center. Um, and so cur- currently, the special events, Restaurant Festival, Chili Cookoff, Christmas Parade, Kris Krindl Market, Halloween Parade, those are special events in, in the experience of someone in Westchester, not special events that need permits. Uh, this is a technical clarification that I keep getting hung up on and I don't think anybody else needs to listen to. But, um, I think it's very important that we recognize that and that's why the description in this document is sort of very broad because any event, if you want a butterfly festival uptown, we're going, if it's uptown, if it's in town center, we're going to put in a twenty dollar fee for visitors parking on that specific day. We did decide on an all-day fee because too frequently people say, oh, like Halloween Parade starts at seven, so I'm gonna get up there at four before they up the price and then the parking lots are full before four and then, um, nobody pays that parking fee. And this is something that we've seen happen in the past and we want to avoid.
So the, the events we're talking about, I won't call them special events, but Restaurant Festival, Chili Cookoff, Christmas Parade, Kris Krindl Market and Halloween Parade, assuming they fall not on a Sunday, would be subject to this?
No, even if they fall on a Sunday. On a Sunday, we still are charging the twenty dollar fee. We are giving waivers to the churches to, like a permit that the visitors can put in their car for the hours that are allotted. If they're, if they stay in that lot, pass the hours on the permit, they will be charged the twenty dollar fee.
Okay. Questions, Thomas?
Question, I got a question. So during that parking meeting, you had Christopher Curtin come here to talk about just parking, the change that just got made in general for his employees and that, you know, they work, they don't necessarily work nine to five hours and, you know, increasing parking because a lot of times either the small business and/or the people that work at the small business pay for this parking. So if we raise this parking to all day on any special event day, that could impact, especially if it's lots and garages, that could impact the people that work in our retail and restaurant establishments. So what are we going to do to not overly burden the same people that support all of these events by doing the work and not, not having as much fun as the rest of us during these events? How are we going to, to address that and make sure that they, they aren't getting burdened every time they want to come into work on a Saturday? Because we got a lot of events, um, that they have to pay twenty bucks to park to go to their job.
I do think that what happened with Chris Curtin, he came here, he was, he sent us all a zillion emails. He was very disturbed. And when he came here and we actually talked about it, he didn't need to be here. We did adjust the time slightly, but he had more parking than he was aware of. And what that means is his, his people did have the ability to park. They already had that, he was not aware of it. So I, I'm, I agree that we need to be very clear on that. However, when the people who are working here have a monthly, you know, round the clock pass, they're still allowed to park there, it won't impact them. If they are paying hourly, that's a different issue and we need to figure out if that is a real situation or if, you know, we need to figure that out.
Yeah, because I think during the meeting you even said it's not, it wasn't just a, a clock issue. It's, it's a retail issue. He might've been the spokesperson and maybe once he realized that he didn't have to pay for parking and he had been paying for parking, I don't know if he's gonna ask for a refund. But nonetheless, but, but it's still, he's, he's. ask for a refund, but nonetheless, but but it's still, he's, he's fortunate because of his lease and all of those things. There's still quite a number of retail establishments and I don't know if we've talked to any of the other retail establishment owners just to get a gauge on whether it's a problem or not before we just put it through and they find out in like Hello Westchester or something that that this has changed. Is it, is it worth taking, taking a breath just to talk to a couple more owners of retail just to to cross check that we're not putting an undue burden on the people that come in and work at the restaurants or in retail establishments?
Are we talking about special event fees or are we talking about rates at the garages?
I'm talking about the $20 special event fee that's going to now be all day long as opposed to just during the the event.
Like Sheila said, I mean, they have.
And in service lots as long, as well as garages, so we've expanded it quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an answer for that. I don't think this is a perfect system. I think at some point we are going to have to choose one or the other and a lot of people will have monthly parking passes or parking availability. I know when I grew up in Fort Lauderdale and worked in the downtown area on the days there were special events, I did make accommodations to get to work different ways and I got dropped off or walked or, you know, and I, and I'm not saying that's the best plan, but I don't know if we can solve all plans at the same time. I think we're, like, at some point, we're going to have to make a decision that's either or.
I guess my question is, have we talked to any of, besides Christopher, who did show up here and was kind of had the pulse on it? Did we talk to anybody else that owns a business just to get a sense check from them before we, before we pull the trigger? Is it, is it worth getting a little bit more input?
Might be worth a conversation with Bid. I don't know if we want to have a conversation with John O'Brien.
I've been, I go to the bid meetings, I, this is, this is, I didn't discuss every point of this particular plan, but I have talked to him repeatedly about these things. I've talked to people, other people who sit on the bid about things like this. I think this is about communication and I think that Ramsey has always been extremely accommodating. I think that holding this off is not going to help. I think that we can add things to this, we can modify things, but I don't know why you would hold it. We're talking about five days right now out of the year. We're not talking about every day, we're not changing. Chris was not here for events, he was here for every day.
Yes, I, I understand that and that's why I thought maybe it was worth, while he was here, just pinging him and saying like, how do you feel about this? Is this, you know, get, get a sense check? Maybe it's worth just putting this on the discussion agenda and just talking to John between today and tomorrow and getting some flavor from the the business owners in the bid.
I, I think that you are not understanding that this is, this is five days out of the year and what Chris was here about was a, a parking pass. So these people are parking in the garage not on an hourly charge.
I, I do understand that as of right now, you might be thinking it's just five days, but as events expand and stuff, I, I just, I don't know, I just think it's worth getting a sense check from our retail establishments, you know, just to make sure that they're feeling okay about this.
I mean, I, I, if I could weigh in here, I mean, it's specifically the workers, not the owners, that are the ones that are going to be parking there. And as was mentioned, I mean, they probably already have monthly passes, they're working there every day, they are not paying.
This also doesn't include the on-street parking and there is a lot of unpermitted residential area. I don't like referring people to those areas, but you know, I mean, in these instances, a lot of the area, like the parades, you're not driving through town anyway, you can't get in and out of town easily, so a lot of people would probably park on the periphery in these situations because they're not working the hours of the event, they're going to work before or during or or end, you know, mid parade. So I do think there's also that availability. I will say John was here today, he didn't, I don't know if he read this policy, he didn't mention that, he did talk about the special event fees in other ways, but not the mentioning of workers.
I think, you know, your, your comment about when you worked in Fort Lauderdale, that, you know, you made other accommodations, I think as long as there's ample notice to those workers who may actually, you know, come in, you know, signs in the parking garage by the pay terminals that say, hey, reminder, you know, we have this special event coming up on X date and the fee will be $20.
And we, you know, we can always do this and then modify it if it doesn't work, if a million people come and tell us, this was terrible, I can't believe you did that, you know, we, this isn't an ordinance, this is just a policy that we're creating internally. So we can, and I expect that we will be modifying it as we actually implement these strategies as well, but I'm open to whatever.
I'll also say just three things. One, we have taken a breath on this, this has been conversation for the last two, maybe three months, so it's not new conversation. Secondly, Ramsey and parking, certainly if there are any business owners that are affected in a very real way, like perhaps Mr. Curtin was, or maybe wasn't since he had parking anyway, would certainly do their best to work with them, knowing them as, as, seeing them in action, I know they would. And third, I do think you need to give the churches more notice in two weeks, not everyone goes to church every Sunday, Ramsey, and so I think, you know, they need to be able to put it, maybe Bernie does, but nobody else. They need to be able to put it in their bulletin or reach their people, send it in an email, you know, at least a month out.
Okay.
Can I get a witness?
At least a month out. So I just think you need to give them more time than two weeks.
Sure.
But I think.
Great, let's go with this.
I'm for the policy as stated here through the parking committee, to the mayor's point, we've been dealing with this for two to three months and either it's an either or, and I think that that, to the mayor's point, and communication is key. And I think people can and have the ability to make adjustments when needed.
Yeah, I think that's my biggest concern, that we're doing this and yeah, we talked about it like a couple of months, but not everybody, as much as we'd like to think that everyone's watching us and listening in and understanding what's going on, that's not, you know, some people get information, you know, more real time. So I, I like what Patrick said, I think maybe it's worth kind of trying to get the word out in advance before we come upon an, an event and all of a sudden the, the parking has gone up. So how do we, how do we make sure that people are aware that this, if this, it sounds like everybody's pretty happy about the change, so I, I don't think it's not going to happen. But, but the point being is, how do we just make sure that people are covered and they're not, they're not sticker shocked and all of these people that come in and work in our, in our establishments don't feel that? Well, I don't know, and maybe they're new, they're, they're all students, they, I don't know, they come in every year, I have no idea, but I mean, still, like, it, but also it's eight to eight, so they can't come in and work eight to five and do their thing and then go home before, no, I'm, I'm just saying, there, there's, it's, it's worth the communication at the very least, I think.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order. Council member asked for this to be put on discussion and once a council person asks for something to put on discussion, it should be put on discussion and no further comments should go further. Thank you.
Okay. Well, taken, we will put that on discussion for tomorrow evening. Thank you. Let's move on. Public Works Committee.
Good evening, everyone. A motion to approve Goose Creek Flood Study in the amount of $38,500 to Remington Verwick. This is going to be a comprehensive study on Goose Creek to eliminate the flooding. And it was a three oh recommendation, but now I have a question on the, on the motion and I don't know if Mr. Metric or Mr. Edwards wants to answer it because Goose Creek goes through five different townships and why are we paying for the whole $38,500 study? It goes West Goshen, the Borough, West Town, Thornbury and Concord and did we discuss this with the other municipalities for, you know, governmental help?
And while you're answering questions, I have a question. Why are we awarding it to a company that's on retainer for the borough? That just seems to me a conflict of interest. We, we should not be giving them just extra money, just.
Well, let's take, let's take one question at a time.
One question.
So Mr. Flynn's question, please.
Okay, so the study area involves two, two municipalities, involves West Goshen and it involves Westchester Borough, starts at Route 202 and goes back to Lacy Street. West Goshen is aware of the study and they're also aware of our struggles with trees falling into the creek in West Goshen, so they understand all of that. So it's just, this, this study just encompasses two communities, two municipalities.
So my follow-up question is, why aren't they participating since they're downstream and they seem to cause most of our trouble with the trees falling in? Why aren't they participating financially in the study?
Okay, probably because we're the ones who are affected, we're the ones who are, where the water's backing up. Their, their portion is in a undisturbed area with loads of trees, forests, and, and they don't have any negative impacts. We got the negative impacts because the water rises, backs up and, and floods our streets. So that's, that's why, that's, you know, I don't speak for them.
Follow-up, I mean, the, the study area is pretty well defined, correct?
It is, yeah.
It does, does it extend into that township?
West Goshen, yes, it does, yeah.
It, it goes into their township or it says from this point, here's how much volume we're getting?
No, it's, it, it extends from 202 and West Goshen Township, then you go upstream all the way to Lacy Street where the Public Works Building is. We're the ones who are most, most impacted.
Have we asked them to participate?
Uh, no.
The, the only reason, I, I read the proposal. And when I saw it went from two, actually, I'm assuming from behind the West Goshen Shopping Center, that's the head of it, right around the area, Montgomery Avenue. It goes all the way to 202. They bombard us, our, our businesses in that area.
Right.
Forever.
Right.
And we get the flooding right there and all our businesses there.
Right.
And then, then their trees fall down.
Yep.
The last storm and then we got double flooded in the borough, which was, which was a real mess. So even though this is a three oh recommendation committee, this was an additional comment that I, that I thought of after reading through it, that, that we should go to them and ask them for 50%.
I think we should take it back to committee, discuss it some more and then definitely reach out to West Goshen after, after, what I'm hearing right there, there's enough that we need to, we need to uncover a few more things.
I agree with that. We will table this and put it back to committee.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
When it goes back to committee, I'd like to see the, it expanded so that someone else gets to bid on it as well.
See, see what?
You, you only told Remington about it. I think.
There were three proposals.
There were three.
There are three proposals?
Yeah.
It was just one? I thought you said there was one. Okay.
Okay.
We got three qualified bids.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not using that word, I'm jumping over it, but good for you. No, I can't say I see your balls either. All right, number two, motion to schedule a public open house for Goose Creek Pollution Reduction Plan, August the 5th, 2025, at 5:30 at Borough Hall, 401 East Gay Street. It's an opportunity to provide public comment on the plan amendment with the presentation by RVE. The video will be recorded and the opportunity for.
Asynchronous.
Feedback through the website is also available. So we're, we're putting together a public hearing that people come and see and they can, will pine with, just not for Borough Council.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
I, I just wanted to say that August 5th is also, not that it interrupts it, but it's National Night Out that they have every year from six to eight. And I don't know, there might be people who would want to do both and that's already in the plans. With the firemen, the police and the ambulance company.
Would it be possible, have we already advertised this? Could we move it to five?
Number two, under Public Works Committee, a motion to schedule a public hearing, an open house for Goose Creek Pollution Reduction Plan for August the 5th, 2025, at 5:00 PM at Borough Hall 401 East Gay Street. Opportunity to provide public comment on the planned amendment with the presentation by RVE. A video will be recorded and the opportunity for.
Asynchronous.
Feedback through the website is also available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? All right, if we, we'll move that, the time. Move that to consent and move on to financing revenue.
Yes, motion to direct solicitor to prepare a memorandum of understanding with Westchester Chamber of Commerce to provide the cost of police services with a cap of $10,000 and we should put per year in there and review the MOU the year after finalizing the five-year police contract. That was in support of the Christmas Parade beginning this year, 2025, committee recommendation three zero.
Questions or comments?
I just have one question and this might go back to parking, but this sheet that was handed out to us, if, it doesn't make sense to me, if the Christmas Parade is the highest attended event that we have, it's got the lowest revenue in parking of the five events. Can someone help me help that, make that make sense to me, please? Since it's a parade, people are coming in and they're not leaving, the other are more transient, so there are more visitors out. There's also the issue of people know when the parking event, event parking begins, so they have come in ahead of time to beat the timing. And then a lot of monthly parkers that work in town just stay in the garages. And so I, like I said, I think I was set, helping set up for the parade and by 5:00 PM, both garages were full and closed. So it was, it happens fast and they don't leave.
This is why we need the all-day fee, because it's the most attended event and it has the lowest revenue, because our policy did not accommodate for what needed to be accommodated for.
I, I thought we gave, last year, we shared revenue with the Chamber of Commerce and it was equal to that.
We did, this is just the total number for each garage, this isn't talking about reductions.
How much did we get Chamber of Commerce last year?
I, I mean, for parking, we gave them half of whatever the total was, which was 2630, so I think we credited them half of that.
I, I thought they got more. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hey, so everyone is good with the $10,000 cap? So it sounds like we have consent. We'll move that to the tomorrow's agenda.
All right, motion to approve the following items here, J and J Outdoor Services LLC, $14,369.50, that's power washing for the bicentennial garage, Johnson Controls for $16,250, that's a bicentennial garage conduit replacement, Next Gen, $30,284 emergency management systems contract, Hysalco, $12,835.20, that's phosphorus removal, Whitmer Public Safety, $15,395.60, that's body armor, Great Lakes Recreation, DBA, Boys Recreation for $65,386, and that's the Horace Pippin Park Playground Installation. All were recommended three zero.
Any questions or comments? Public questions or comments? Okay, let's move that to consent, please. Move on to public safety.
Okay, item number one is a motion to schedule a public hearing, August 20th, 2025, at 6:30 PM to consider amendment. at 6:30 PM to consider amendment to Chapter 37, Animals Creating New Article Prohibiting the Sale of Cats, Dogs and Rabbits in Retail Stores in the Borough. Uh, and this was recommended by the committee 3-0.
Questions, comments?
Mr. McCoy, I have a question on the, uh, on the motion there. A clarification. If a retail store, which we, we have, we have, we have two stores that actually cater in the borough to pets. One's ice cream and food, okay? And the other one is, uh, pet supplies. Right, uh, right on Church Street. So if a licensed breeder of Bulldogs has a license with the state, has a, a breeder's license and wants to, uh, have that store, if they were willing to, uh, sell their dogs in the store, this, this law prohibits them from doing that. The, uh, which is, uh, you know, stops the economic growth of, of the, uh, of business. So if, if you're, my question is, if you're properly licensed, you have a license as a breeder, you have a license from the Commonwealth, the people from the, the pet store, and we're already picking on them because that's the only ones here. Uh, let's just say if another one opens, if they're, if they're proper, if they're properly licensed and everything they're supposed to do, why are we telling them that they can't sell a breeder's dog in that store? I wasn't part of the, the.
Yeah, let, let me try to, like, this is a little bit of speculation. We might need to talk to, to Chris from a legal standpoint. But what I know from, so the, what the ordinance also says is that, like, if you are a breeder, a licensed breeder that lives in the borough, you, that they are not, like, and you live on Walnut Street and you're licensed and all that, you can still sell out of your Walnut Street house.
Yes.
You're allowed to do that. My, also, also my understanding from working with a dog rescue is you're, the dog rescue that I work with, and I believe this, I, I'm assuming this extends to breeders, is they're only allowed to, um, transact the dog in one location. They have meet and greets all over Chester County and beyond. But if you go somewhere, you go and you say, I want that dog, you have to go back to the dog rescue to purchase or, you know, or transact. Uh, um, it's more of a donation to support the cost of, you know, vaccinations and stuff. But you have to go back to the dog rescue, particular location where they are licensed to transact the, the dog. So my assumption, and we can check with Kristen, if you want to put it on discussion for, you know, and we can check with, oh, okay. My, my assumption is that breeders may have a similar stipulation that they're only allowed to sell out of a, a certain location. So they might be able to showcase their dogs in these stores or like rescues can showcase their dogs in these stores, but they might not be able to transact. But can we confirm that?
I'd like to get a clarification, because free enterprise, I don't want to stop any free enterprise that, that, um, that they have legal, if you have all the documentation, you know, why would we? I'm against all that other stuff, but, you know, a free enterprise is not something that we should promote.
Are those retail stores, those two locations doing that now?
No.
No, they're not.
No, 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 no.
So we'll put that on discussion for tomorrow, get clarification from Kristen or Ariel or someone.
Yeah, well, I mean, let's hear what she has to say. I mean, I don't know, she's, she, I don't think she's a lawyer, so we might still need to get Chris, but she might know.
Hello, Ariel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great. Um, well, thank you again for, uh, giving me this opportunity to, to answer your questions. So my name is Ariel Lefkowitz. I am a public policy specialist, um, with the Stop Puppy Mills Campaign at Humane World for Animals. I'm here on behalf of a resident here in Westchester, um, who is passionate about animals' well-being and, and approached me on this issue. Um, so the, the ordinance, because what it is doing is seeking to stop and place an obstacle essentially to the puppy mill pipeline. Um, that, that is the, the idea, that is the purpose behind presenting an ordinance like this. Um, in terms of your question, council member, and thank you for that question. So if, um, a breeder, um, in general, what we have discovered is that most breeders, many breeders, uh, that consider themselves reputable, responsible, would not sell through a third party. They would want to meet the potential person, um, the potential family that is going to take that puppy and, and, uh, create that relationship because that, that lasts for the dog's lifetime and possibly beyond. Um, and so there are actually, in fact, several breed clubs across the country that in their bylaws will say, you shall not sell through a third, uh, party, including a pet store. Um, and this, uh, ordinance is preventative. Um, so as you mentioned, there are no pet stores currently that are selling these puppies. Um, if there was a, a shelter or a rescue that wanted to coordinate with a pet shop and do an adoption day event, they would still be able to do that. Um, the consumer would, would coordinate with the pet rescue in order to adopt that animal. And so let, let me know if you need further clarification or, uh, any follow-up questions to that.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ariel. But the, the, the general question is for free enterprise, even, even, even though y- you say generally, th- there can be a possibility that somebody would, a breeder would want to, um, showcase, as, as Nicole said, showcase their puppies i- in a retail store in the borough. Uh, and would they, to your best of your knowledge, would they be able to do a tran, a, a financial transaction, uh, at that location? Or would they have to, uh, uh, go back to where they, where they originally live or the dogs live? Do you know the answer to that?
Um, so the ordinance would not apply to the sale, um, of dogs, cats and rabbits that are being given away from the premises on which they were bred and raised. Um, so the breeder would be able to sell that dog or cat from their home, um, where the dog where it was raised, where the mother dog was raised. Um, the, I guess, th- they would not be able to, they would not be able to sell it, I guess, or like the pet store would not be able to sell it. Um, and the, the idea is to keep that interaction between the consumer, the breeder, and the place where the dog was raised so that the consumer can see that location and can get an idea of the environment that that dog is coming from. Um, because if the interaction is happening through that third party, through a pet store, there is a danger of a lack of transparency. And so what you see with puppy mills a lot of the time is that they are hiding behind the third party because the environment that the dog was raised is less than ideal.
So there's nothing to prevent the private breeders from leaving a corridor advertising at that, that store? They just can't sell the animal in that store, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's certainly nothing wrong with creating, um, like, community relationships. If there's a breeder in the community, um, that wants it to be known that they sell dogs and, you know, they are responsible, they're, they're doing, raising the dogs in a humane, ethical way, um, then they can absolutely, uh, advertise it, you know, under this and, and spread that through word of mouth or advertising and connect with the potential family in that way. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to put it on discussion. Ms. Dorsey's correct. We should probably get a ruling from the solicitor whether we are allowed to stop, uh, free enterprise in, in the borough or sell dog, uh, dogs or cats in the borough. Darrell Cook, South Walnut Street. Has any other municipality in the Commonwealth passed such an ordinance? And if so, who?
Ariel, you could probably answer that question.
Yes, I can. Um, there are 13 other localities in Pennsylvania that have passed similar legislation. Um, those cities include Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, Wilkinsburg, Sharpsburg, Bellevue, Monessen, Allentown, Easton, Forks, Bethlehem, Doylestown, New Britain and West Norton.
Thank you. We'll move this to, uh, discussion for tomorrow evening. Move on to item two.
Item number two, motion to approve special event applications on October 18th, 2025, Unite for Her 5K and Fun Run. And, uh, event number two on December 13th, 2025, the Chris Kingel Market Den in downtown Westchester. These were, uh, recommend, recommended 3-0 by the committee.
Questions or comments? Public questions or comment? Okay. Please move that to consent and we will move on to smart group.
Okay, motion to direct the solicitor to prepare an amendment to Chapter 66, 1,000.6, um, disciplinary action to escalate points imposed by guilty convictions of citations for first, second and third disruptive conduct nuisance cases to three, four or five points. So, um, Sean gave a great presentation last week regarding, um, how our points process, our citation process worked over the past year. And, um, long story short, what, what came up and Bernie had mentioned is, you know, when it comes to citing homes, the, the big issues aren't, you know, trash is an issue and it gets, often gets cleaned up, things like that. The, the big issue goes back to the nuisance and, and the, the sound, the, the noise and all of those things that happen. So is it beneficial, and we thought it was, to say, okay, as opposed to just having a standard three-point system? Every time you get, get to, you have a problem and you're cited and you, and the borough prevails and, and court, you get three points created that you get three points for the first violation, four points for the second violation, five points for the third violation. And that will also accelerate that, that 10-point scale based off of the bigger problems versus trash, you get one point, you know, it, it's, it's really these, these bigger problems that are, are giving agita to the, the residents in the borough. So we thought it was a good idea to update and that is what is proposed here today.
So one question, I mean, doing this as opposed to just lowering the 10-point threshold? Is there a difference?
The difference is that it's weighting on the nuisance issues versus the, like, the trash and the other things. If you just lower the point scale, you know, it, it, it kind of still treats everything equally where, where the, going back to our thought process was that, that the true agita comes from.
Repeat offenders.
That, that are, that are waking up neighbors and doing things, as Brian knows well, on his property.
Questions, comments?
No, but I think this was a really thoughtful, simple way to fix something that was clearly not working. So I appreciate the committee's, um, work on this and I, I think we'll see some good results from it.
Agreed, thank you.
But to Patrick's point, could you do both?
Well, I think, I think what I heard was that, you know, unfortunately, then you'll get the very occasional persons, homeowners, whatever, that, that have an issue that sort of inadvertently get caught in that, that cycle that aren't repeat offenders, um, that would, you know, then go over that lower threshold, then that's not the, you know, what we're, we want the outcome to be.
A lot of them, I'll just say this, a lot of the trash, things in the yard that aren't trash, but are nuisance, kind of follow the behavior that you were trying to address here initially. A lot of those things are secondary. So I do still think that we need to look at Chapter 66 and some of the fines, because I think there's, the fine thresholds are still really low to the point that they're, you know, they're, they don't do what they're effectively supposed to do either. Um, that could be a, that could be a next step.
To your point, Mr. Travis, the, the fines are multiple by, uh, divisible by 10 or eight or seven, who's ever living in the apartment building. So, you know, 20, $20 is not going to really bother anybody, uh, if they have the pony up 20 bucks for a violation. So to your point, I, I agree with you.
Any public comment, questions? Okay, we'll move that, uh, to consent.
All right, um, number two, motion to grant extension until August 31st, 2025 for 2010 to 2014 West Washington Street Axel Square Land Development Project. So they, they came to us and requested this extension, they're reworking. I'm a little nervous, they're reworking from eight units to six units. Did we ever hear why? Have they ever given us a why? They're not giving them, yeah. I, I, you know, I mean, but they asked for it, so we said, okay. So we're recommending 3-0.
Comments or questions? Public comments? Okay, we'll move that to consent.
All right, um, motion to approve HARB applications. So we, the committee recommended to approve all of the, uh, recommendations from HARB.
Questions or comments? Public comments or questions? Okay, move this to consent, please.
All right, um, number four, consider directing the solicitor to attend zoning hearing board for 531 Marshall Drive. Um, they are asking for a relief from residential dimensional and parking requirements. Um, when we looked at the, um, dwelling, they had a large driveway already that could have two cars side by side, probably parked at least like four cars in there. So we thought that to try to make that bigger and add more pavement in front of their house, we thought it was, um, you know, it's against the zoning and, um, I recommend that the solicitor does go to that meeting.
Comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Okay, we'll move that to consent.
All right, and then 501 East Minor Street, um, is also asking for relief to allow illuminated brown mount sign at the Melton Center, um, on West Market Street. So the, the relief is really because, um, you're supposed to have, what is it? Like 450, is it 500 feet?
It's 500 and it's 465.
Yeah, so it's like 35 feet out of compliance with our zoning. Um, we thought, you know, when we took a look at it, that it seemed fine from a distance where it is and all of those things. Lisa recused herself because she is on the board of the Melton Center, so that's why you see 2-0, but we recommend no solicitor attending for this one.
And this is replacing an existing sign, correct?
Yeah, it's not illuminated the sign it's replacing, but it's, yeah.
Okay, comments or questions? Public comments or questions? Okay, move that to consent, please. Other business. Approved budget modification or expense and revenue for a capital project, Goose Creek Green Public Works, Matlack Street Rain Garden Stormwater Project, and approval of final certificate of payment, number three, with change order in amount of $73,200.
All right, Sean Metrick. Uh, so since this was put on the agenda, there's been emails going back and forth, phone calls and conversations. So, um, I've had given, I've given it a lot of thought since it's been put on the agenda, uh, since last week. Uh, so what happened here was we had a project that had some changes that came up to, uh, and changes are a natural part of projects. But what happened here was that we weren't coming back to council and getting authorization to spend the dollars above and beyond 10% of the contract amount. What you're seeing in this final certification for payment is the sum of all those changes, which amounts to $73,000, which is roughly 27 to 30% above the contracted amount for the project. So I understand that everyone has a problem because it feels like putting cart in front of horse and I get that. So I think what we, we should be doing differently going forward is in the bid documents, there's a process by which changes get agreed to between the contractor and the borough. And what we should be doing at that handshake moment when we know that dollar amount is checking in with our purchasing policy, making sure we're under the 10% before we say, go ahead and do the work. And if it's going to be, and if the grand total is going to, of change is going to be over 10%, I think we need to, I think we need to put shovels down, we need to put pencils down, we need to put the project down until we can get authorization from council. If I'm reading the feedback I've gotten from you individually, since we put this on the agenda, that seems like where we missed communicated here about this project. So I'm addressing the problem front to. So I'm addressing the problem front on here. There's probably lots of questions about what the changes are exactly. I'm just speaking to the problem that has been raised in those conversations since Friday. So if you have questions about details of the project, Don Edwards is here to help with that. If you have questions about the purchasing policy and how things got on Barb's desk and how she threw the flag on the field to sort of say, hey, we need to go to council with this, she's here to answer those questions. But I wanted to address the problem first.
I think the first thing, just for people listening and in the audience, maybe if Don could give a little bit of background about this because we are here to act on the change order itself.
For the background, would you like for me to just briefly go over the five different changes that were? Okay.
Actually, could you start at the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just start with the project itself, contract price, you know, if that was awarded.
Sure. It's, the scope of work is basically rain gardens around the public works facility. There's rain gardens on Matlack Street, the bump outs, which has been discussed. There's also a big rain garden, Long Goose Creek. And there's also another rain garden on Lacy Street and also a new parking lot. It's a contaminated site. We knew that there was the possibility of finding contaminated soil, but we didn't know that for sure and we sure couldn't estimate how much we'd have to get rid of. That is one of the five, five change orders. So we dealt with that at the time. Going by memory, the parking lot was another one. The original plan was to put one inch of a top coat on top of, to mill and pave, one inch of top coat. But when we, we looked underneath the existing blacktop, there was just dirt. There was soil. So a good parking lot is just not going to last by putting one inch of blacktop on top. So we, the second change order was putting a base underneath there. And now we have a really good parking lot that will last many years. There was another change order that involved during construction had to do with the rain garden directly or adjacent to the creek. Had to put in some 2A modified stone compacted to make sure that it didn't slough off the parking lot into it. So that was a, that was a structural need that we, that we needed for that.
Winterization?
Yes. The project was supposed to be finished before winter. Due to some delays, we had to winterize the rain gardens. And what we did was put in erosion control, believe it was like a Curlex matting to make sure that the soil didn't wash away because it wasn't finished. It didn't have mulch in it. It was just dirt. So we had to winterize it until the spring. So that was another change order. You miss any? Yes. To me, this is, so the plan that we had for the parking lot, I didn't like. It didn't maximize the number of spaces there. So we, we came up with a new plan and we needed like maybe 12, 12 more, 14 more curbs, the wheel stops. Because the parking lot, it is flush with the rain garden back towards where Goose Creek is. There's no curb. You roll a little bit, you're into the rain garden. So we needed those wheel stops. So that just had to do with getting more parking spaces out of our parking lot. Any other?
Was this the grant that Will Williamson got that that was supposed to have been completely free to the borough? That we did not have to contribute at all?
Okay. So, yes. So what it was is two grants and and we had more grants than we had project in the very beginning. Where these change orders, I think our out-of-pocket cost is less than $1,500 now. Assuming that we get all of the grant money back when we reimburse it. So our out-of-pocket cost for this, for these change orders is less than $1,500.
Can I ask how this was planned?
The whole project?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually I can't. Maybe Sean or Will can do that.
Do you mean like, did you design work?
Yeah. I mean, if we're talking about missing this many marks, this is a lot of marks that were missed. And it seems like there's some failures on the planning. And you guys were talking about design build and this, this is why design build makes my hair curl. You know, this feels like design build and it feels like you can't take guesses and drop a plan because you think it might. I mean, I do that in concept phase. I would never hand that over to a factory and get it made and just hope. And this is a hope, a hope and a dream and a yay, and it didn't work out. What happened?
Okay. This is not design build. This was completely designed. Of the change orders, there is one.
I think design build would have, would have, if you guys had design build set up, it would allow you to do exactly what you're doing. This is what makes my skin curl. I think that we need to have exceptionally high standards at the beginning so that we know what we're getting into. And of course, there are always things that are going to come up and issues, but there shouldn't be 12. There should be one, maybe two.
I think the one thing, if I had a time machine, that really bugs me about how this all went down is not knowing the, not taking a core sample of the, of the parking lot and not knowing that we actually needed more than, more than we thought there. That's the one thing. The other changes that Don mentioned, I think were smaller in dollar value and more. We can't predict where the soil contamination is going to be, even where we know where the plume is or how long it's going to take to get rid of. But that, but that park-
The space under a parking lot is massive.
Parking lot, and I've spoken to Panoni about that. Yeah. That's the one that bothers me.
So not having a proper layout for parking, seriously?
They had a, they had a parking layout. It just wasn't the best. You know, we were able to maximize the number of spaces and that was just changing line stripes in the parking lot.
Easy fix. I'm so glad that you did it. I'm, but I'm, I'm very disturbed by the front end planning here.
Okay.
There's some massive failures in the design process. And the reason I bring up design build is I feel like this is sort of why you are leaning towards design build because you see that this is happening and I don't want this to be acceptable. I want this to be unacceptable.
I understand.
Possibly not hire the team again if that is what they're doing.
Agreed.
Again, I don't mean to interrupt, but let me just say two things. I find this whole idea of giving this to us at the last minute unacceptable. I'm in the middle of a building project now. If I don't know that amount of overage, if they don't tell me that, I'm not going forward, period, with that, with that particular piece of it. They have to either get it in budget and at the time when you started going over this for each of these items, you should have scaled back the project. So it fit within the amount of the, so it fit within the scope of the grant, but yet it fit within the money's had. You know, to treat this borough as a cash cow that you can make these type of errors and that we should just cough up the additional money, I just find that unacceptable and not giving of a director. I don't understand that and I don't understand why you would move forward with something like that when you could have scaled back the project. If you knew that you had more contaminated land than anticipated, you know that it's going to be extra. But again, you have a Bill, Panoni, who does work for the borough, who already, who we're using indiscriminately and who is billing, billing the borough additional funds. And again, I think it's a conflict of interest.
Yeah. The failure was not that the contractor brought the change orders to us at the very end. The failure was we didn't come to council with the, once it exceeded the 10%.
But why would you let the change orders get so out of line is my question. Why, why wouldn't you scale back the project so that it fits within the scope of the grant? So the borough doesn't have to provide any additional funds? I guess that's my primary question.
It's definitely a strategy, but, well, what I would say is that, again, the out-of-pocket cost for the borough is less than $1,500. The grant, the grant should be, you know, picking up the rest of the cost. And, and yeah, I mean, I agree. I mean, if you, if you want to change the strategy going forward where if there's problems with the project and, and you know, we don't want to spend money, you know, we can, you know, talk to the engineer and contractor about scaling back the project. That's, it's an option.
Well, I don't think you should assume that the money is there to spend. You know, it's not just about spending money. I think, you know, you're, you're hopeful that the grant will pick up the best of the money. Well, let Panoni pick up the other part. But I'm just saying, you should not assume that the borough will pick up any part of it, whether it's 1,500 or 15,000. I think that is just unacceptable as a director to do that.
Yeah.
I, oh, yeah. Sorry.
Yeah. So one thing I want to look at, I mean, one, we are lucky that it's only going to cost us a net total of $1,500. I think the one thing that I'm a little concerned about is we knew this back in March. We knew this back in March. And I think the issue here is because, you know, we've seen what the work Premier has done. We've seen the corner of Minor and High Street, the work they've done. But my concern is with four of these change orders essentially come about planning.
Come about what?
About planning. If we look at that, you know, the bio curve, the bio, you know, the soil, the parking lot paving that had to be done again and then overlapped twice. You know, I think, you know, and that was my concern originally with this project, the way it was initially bid. Because I believe, I believe the estimate Panoni had was 250,000, right?
Forty, 250?
It, that was the original estimate and then the solicitor ruled it wasn't going to be part of the responsible contracting ordinance. Now, how, if it would have been part of the responsible contracting ordinance, there is a stipulation in here that says within seven days, a change order, you know, we have to be notified within seven days. You have to be notified within seven days. And that would also be with planning, which would allow them to probably scale back the project. So I think the, the commentary here is, one, we need to know this right away when it happens. Two, we need to have a conversation with Panoni about this. Because they're the ones that are responsible for the soil testing. That's not on the contractor. That is on the engineer. And, and, you know, generally they've, they've done good work, but this to me is a little troubling. Maybe you have to light a fire underneath their ass a little bit maybe, but we can't have this again.
Sets a bad precedent and we shouldn't have it now.
Yeah.
Panoni, you have a question?
Yeah. I mean, I agree with what my colleagues are saying. It sounds like, you know, A, number one is we didn't plan it out properly. And any contractor could come in and just give us a quote that's a low bid and we're like, great. And then next thing you know, there's like 15 gazillion things that are problems. And then, so I'm not going to continue because I think you got the, the point from, from my colleagues here. But also the change order process, right? Like, change orders are hassles. They're paying. You gotta wait for them. People have to prove them. You know, I've just been at work and we've had a change order that I've been waiting for for, we finally got signed today. Yay. So good, good news today. But I've been waiting for it for a couple of months, I think, for it to get full sign off. And it slows everything down, but the process is there for a reason. And the fact of the matter is, is if these numbers were known a couple of months ago, we should have known these numbers a couple of months ago. And, and yeah, it might slow something down, but there's a reason for it. And, and it's, it's, we don't want to lose sight of that reason because things have happened, you know.
The one thing I want to say is you've, I think you've got a subject matter expert sitting as the council president. So I'm curious what your-
Well, my thoughts are, I mean, there are always unknowns, you know. Should they have done core samples in the parking lot?
Yes.
If we were going to do the whole thing, yeah, they probably should have.
Yeah.
The contaminated soil, was there unit pricing in the bid? I mean, there, there are definitely things that could have been done in the planning stages a little bit better, preparing the specs, whatever. But the reality is, we will have this on every single project, that there are unknowns that we just can't, we don't have x-ray eyes. You know, we can do as much as we possibly can to recommend testing all those things to try and nail down stuff as closely as we can. But it's also why we put contingencies, numbers in projects because there are instances where we don't, we don't know.
Right.
So I don't know what the contingency was in this project. And, you know, Mr. Metrick, you and I discussed this earlier today about, you know, should we have a standard contingency that we're put either in the project or in the budget to account for potential unknowns? If we don't have any at the end of the project, great, then we haven't spent it. But-
Well, there's a strategy that, I'm just going to be, be frank with you. I mean, there's a strategy that Remington Vernick is using for the Gay Street closure went out for bids today. Okay. And what they put in there was basically $100,000 contingency into the bid. So, so what does that do? When you open up bids, there's going to be $100,000, which really isn't for anything except for change orders, you know, and redesign and things like that. Is that something council really wants, you know? Because really the, you know, the price that comes in is inflated by $100,000. So, I mean, it's a strategy. I don't have a problem with it. But, you know, just understand that, you know, sometimes you could be approving something where it's not even the real cost. You're just, you're just adding a contingency to cover change orders.
Yeah. I would, I would push back on that a little bit to say it's not just for change orders. It's for things like, we can't predict what the market is going to do over the next six months that, that this project is going to be executed.
Yeah, I get that.
So, you know, it's protecting the client, in this case, the borough to say, hey, we can't predict what purchasing is, but we want to make sure that it's covered in case prices do go up. So, yeah, I would disagree with that statement.
Okay. And I accept what you're saying. That's what, that's how the bids are coming in. So that contingency will be there.
Well, and a question on that because, I mean, we do allow, you know, it sounds like the process is 10%. So technically, if we're trying to get a million dollar bid, $100,000 is 10%. So there's, you know, that's kind of the contingency. Although I guess then if we still have the 10%, you get 20%. So, you know, I mean, that, that could be helpful. But we do have in our process, it's, it's, it sounds like what happened here was when you totaled everything up, it was outside of the, the stipulations that we had to give you that, that flexibility. It just kind of over, went over a bit and it went over the 10% and that's where we're caught here that the change order was needed. So, so we have levers for you to not have to worry about every change being addressed through council.
Right.
I guess the question is, are the levers, do we feel like these levers are inadequate? Or do we like these levers? And if we like these levers, these are the levers. If we think that there's opportunity to improve the levers, then we can talk about improving the levers and making them-
I don't think anybody's, I don't think anybody's suggesting about changing the levers. I think the 10% is fair and I think we have a game plan going forward where we know that when we even get close to it, we're going to, like Sean said, you know, we're going to stop. We're going to tell you, we're not, we're not going to repeat what happened here.
Can I, I do think that looking at this, this was a bad project. It's going to happen. Maybe somebody was having a bad day when they were planning this out. I don't know. It doesn't matter. This was a bad project. I don't think that the levers necessarily need to be changed unless this is happening regularly.
Mr. McCoy?
Good evening. I can't believe that I sat here this quietly for this amount. I'm actually sweating. And I don't sweat.
Do I talk to me or Sean?
Yeah. Manopause at 73. Yeah. Mr. Edwards, now I got you.
Okay.
And then I'll ask Mr. Metrick. Everybody covered the process. And I'm going to cover- And I'm going to cover what you totally disregard in this borough is our purchasing policy. You know the policy. Supposedly, you've been here long enough, you should know the policy. It's not the first time you've kicked it down the street. You knew in March that we had a problem. You knew in April we had a problem. You know, in May we had a problem. You didn't give a rat's ass. And I can't put it anywhere clearer because you thought you were using, to the mayor's point, free money. Now, it's not my position here to lecture you because you're an adult and it's not what I'm supposed to do. And Ms. Simone asked me to be kind and gentle. But I'm going to look at your boss and I'm going to ask him, if he knew that thing was 10%, why'd he sign it, the thing in June? The second thing is, why did you ask for this to be pushed through or put on for payment knowing that the change orders were well excessive what they should have been? In my world, I'm from Delaware County, Darby, dirtball. You're trying to hide this and kick it under the carpet and you don't want nobody else to see it. That's me. Mr. McCoy or Don?
First of all, I, I guess I would say, I, I think that is being disrespectful.
Oh, I, I'm glad you stopped. I'm glad you did. So I'll, you both respond to this.
I would like to respond to that. The, the part that's fair is, I, I should have known about it. You know, there's a lot more to it, but I mean, there's, that I should have known about it. The fact that I didn't give a rat's ass is, is, is false. I, if you check my email, which I, I think most or all of you saw, I told Barb that we didn't have a policy to deal with change orders, you know? I thought change orders were stand, would be a standalone policy. I never heard that there was a policy. We've had meetings about it. Nobody mentioned 10%. Everybody, you know, in our infrastructure group knew that we had change orders. They were discussed. Nobody mentioned 10%. But that doesn't change the fact of what you said, which is absolutely true, which is I should have known. And I do agree with that. But, so some of what you say, I, I agree with and accept and another part I don't because it's not true.
McCoy, since I stopped, why don't we ask the director of finance how she found out about this thing and why she stopped the process? Please.
Good evening. This came to my attention last week. I was on vacation at the end of June and I was at the GFLA conference the last two days in, June into July. And while I was away, I was preparing for the agenda tonight and there was no purchasing approval for this item. When invoices came from my staff accountant, they came to, in my email and I was reviewing the ACH payments. That's, we are trying to move forward with ACH payments versus checks. And I discovered that there were three payments on the ACH listing for Premier Concrete. One of them being certification number three and then the change order, which was on, that's before you tonight. I knew that the PO that was issued back in February was for $246,000. And the amount of the change order on this one would have pushed the project up to $320,000. And I knew that, that was above the threshold and I was not comfortable with signing that check. I immediately had sent an email to Mr. Metrick, Mr. Williams and Mr. Edwards, informing of, informing them of that. And we had a meeting the next day to discuss, you know, what the, the, the purchasing policy states with anything that's above 10% and why this didn't get on the finance agenda in July. It's because, again, I wasn't there. I didn't see it under the purchasing approvals. I happened to catch it because it was on the payment listing to, to go out and I, I stopped that. One thing I would like to say is there were two grants for this project and the total of the spend on this is above $1,500. So I would like that to be known if we go to the top page of this. If you scroll up, please, because we put additional costs in that we didn't have for the engineering. Please go up further. It's the attachment that I put together. It should be with the first page. So we estimated that the project is going to be around $350,000 and we had two grants that came in a little over $320,000. And that's the reason why it says on the agenda to approve a, a budget modification. We really don't need a budget modification because we had additional money in the line items within the capital expense. I just wanted to make sure that that was put on record.
Question, can, question. What, if we hadn't have spent the $73,000, what would have happened to the grant money?
Wouldn't have reimbursed, we wouldn't go back for as much of it to be reimbursed. In other words, we were reimbursed up to what we were eligible for and that would be-
So we wouldn't have gotten $320,000 and had $73,000 to use for something else?
Like Barb said, there was other costs, but the, the 50, under 50, okay. The two grants are set up so that they would pay for construction cost. And it's the construction cost that's about $1,500. As part of the grants, there's a match that's involved and our payments to Panoni for engineering costs are additional. So when I say 1,500, I'm talking about construction cost.
So what, what's the Panoni additional money then that-
Well, the, the total that I saw, their, their, their charges for this project were $87,000. That's, that's the latest and there's probably going to be a little bit more. So that, that was the, the match, our, our responsibility for, for getting the grants.
Okay, so what was the differential between the Panoni now versus what we thought we, like, I, what, what I'm hearing is that there was a differential beyond the $1,500 that has, is related to what we had to pay to Panoni.
Okay, well, I don't mean to confuse you, but I mean, you know, each year there's a budget in there for this project. And that, that budget includes the engineering costs. So over the span of probably two or three years, you know, Panoni's costs were included in the budget. But the grant was for approximately $320,000 in, in construction costs and the borough would pay out of pocket for the engineering costs, which we have been doing.
So the 320,000, you have to back out 90,000?
No, no, it's the, the 300, the 320,000, 308. And this is contingent on us getting the reimbursement approved, but 318.5 is being paid by a grant. Okay, so the grants are for a total of 318,500 dollars of construction cost. Forget the engineering costs, 318,500 dollars for the, for the construction costs. Our construction, the actual cost is about $320,000. So there's, you know, the, the difference is $1,500. Now, now the engineering is a separate, a separate cost and it's, and it's budgeted and paid for differently.
So what did we budget for the engineering costs for this versus what we're paying for the engineering costs for this?
That I can't answer. That's, that's probably either Sean or Will Williams' question.
So this budgeted for the engineering, when they should have done sample soil tests and all of the other things and did not do it to the satisfaction to, without, that, that was needed. I mean, this seems to me that this is a Panoni problem, that they should eat this completely. This 1,500, they didn't do their job.
I, I can't conclude that for everything here. I, I can conclude that, I can conclude that for the parking lot.
I, I will say to them, let me just make one other really quick point here is that during the public works committee meetings, you know, it's very rare that both engineers are there. And I've said this, I've said it again to the people on the public works committee, is the engineer should be there for every meeting to provide updates. And maybe we would have known that. Maybe you all on the, on the public works committee would have known that. Maybe in March, that, hey, something isn't right here and here's what we have to do and here's the explanation is the reason why. And so I think going forward, even if they have nothing to present, they need to be at these meetings.
Comment? Yeah, Mr. Edwards, the, back to my two colleagues down here, the, the core sampling.
Can I make this real simple?
Was that part of the scope?
I'll make this real simple. The, the blacktop for the public works parking lot was all broken up. You didn't, you didn't need a core sample. All you had to do, how I found out about it, our contractor was there. He picked up a broken piece of blacktop. He lifted it up and he said, there's dirt underneath there. It's like, oh. So you didn't even need a core sample. All you had to do was go out there, lift up a piece of blacktop, you would have seen what was there.
But is the, is, is, was it part of the scope that the engineering team was supposed to do soil examping on the project because we knew that the site was contaminated?
The, the, this, I can't say yes. What I can say is, it's their responsibility to design a functioning parking lot. And one inch of top coat on top of dirt isn't going to last and it doesn't, it doesn't meet the, the high standards that we have. And so it's not as, you know, when you're an engineer, you know, you're expected to do certain things. If you're going to design something and you have questions about what's underneath the parking lot, you propose to do core samples or you come out to the site and look at the parking lot and lift up the broken blacktop and you'll find.
So this could fall under errors and omissions by the engineer if we pu, we push it?
I, I'm going to, I'm not going to answer that just because it's a legal question. Yeah, that's a legal question.
Oh, who was holding their feet to the fire, I guess is my question. Panoni, that is.
Well, I can only tell you that I have held their feet to the fire on so many projects at so many different times. I'm like a broken record. I'm sure I grate on everybody's nerves. I got to tell you, when we talked about the, you know, hey, man, I'm going to just speak frankly a little bit, you know? This, this contaminated soil, we, we knew about the contaminated soil the whole time. We knew, we knew, we knew that there were restrictions on it the whole time. It wasn't until the very end of the design that all of us, and we were tall, it's like, not a problem, no big deal. We just, we're okay. Got to the very end of the project and all of a sudden the contaminated soil became an issue and it caused a delay. You know, I'm not trying to make myself look good. I'm not going to look good tonight. But I'm telling you, between them and RVE, I, I'm telling you, I have gone toe to toe and, and that's fact.
All right, we have an action item on the agenda. And I'd like to conclude this discussion. Obviously there are things, you know, from a process perspective, et cetera, that needs to be addressed, but I'd like to move forward on this item. Do we have consensus to move this forward to tomorrow evening?
Tomorrow evening to consent or just-
To consent.
To pay them?
Correct.
I don't know that I would approve paying them.
I, I just wouldn't say. They, they, the work has been performed, so just please consider that.
Can we get a discount?
Sounds like it's going to go on discussion for tomorrow evening again then. Okay, I believe that is all the business for this evening. We are adjourned at, I'm sorry, public comments, sure.
So what I think happened was-
Come on up.
Say your name and address.
Janine Haldar, our resident. I think what happened there was Panoni either did or did not do a geotechnical report, which would have told you about the soils. But I think more that, that concrete contractor probably excluded in his proposal removal of the hazardous material. So whoever was reviewing those proposals for the contractors waived that. I can guarantee you on the estimate, they excluded it. Which then I think you do, you could possibly, whoever the contractor was, I don't know, just kind of being the first person hearing about this, you could go back to them and say, why did you exclude the abatement or the removal of hazardous materials? Just a thought.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, we are adjourned at 8:56.